Good evening, please rise and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ted Watson.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Present.
Alderman Logan.
Present.
Alderman Snow.
Present.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Present.
Alderman Schunman.
Present.
Alderman Kleckler.
Here.
Alderman Folsom.
Present.
Seven present, you have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item of business on the agenda this evening is audience request. This is an opportunity for any citizens that may be here to come forward and address the council about an issue and present what they would like to. If there's anybody in the audience at this time that would like to come forward, please step up, just give us your name and go ahead with your presentation.
Hi, I'm Roger Van Oostdahl. Most of you know me from working at the post office. I actually live 511 East 26 in Sterling. But I wanted to say that I support this leaf burning ban here in Rock Falls. I work here. My three-year-old twin boys go to daycare here. Me and my coworkers easily spend more than eight hours a day in this town. The mail carriers I work with spend most of their time outside, in the elements, whether it be smoke or snow or whatnot. I have a signed list here, most of them that also support the leaf ban, leaf burning ban. My family and I also enjoy restaurants on this side of the river quite a bit, you can tell. But we prefer to spend money locally if we can. But when we realize that there's a day when, you know, this haze is really bad over here, we will avoid this town, as I'm sure a lot of other people will also. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, very much.
I don't really have anything written. My name is Renee Henry. I live here in Rock Falls. I've been here for almost 20 years now. And I am definitely want the burn ban for leaves. I would prefer to see it for fire pits also. The reason I say that is the very first day this year that was nice that we could open up the windows. I opened my windows up. I had two fire pits going behind me, one beside me and one across the street. Needless to say, my windows went closed. I can't even enjoy the outside air in my house. I have a health problem. Do not want to be around the smoke. I don't ever go outside when they're burning leaves. My husband has asthma and respiratory problems. My neighbor that I take care of is on oxygen 24/7. She can't step foot outside when anybody's burning. I just think it would be better for everybody if the leaf burning was banned and I'd like to see the fire pits banned too, because it's just as bad as the leaf burning. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council?
My name is Sharon Semester. I live here in Rock Falls. And I actually am against the burn ban. I would like to see the ordinances enforced. As they're already on the books, so I'd like to have the people have a chance to at least try to adhere to the ordinances. I guess that I would think the concentration, if you're worried about tourism, I think they're going to be more deterred by our shootings downtown than what's in the air. If that's a worry. So I'm opposed to it. I'd just like to see, according to the survey that was sent out, it seemed as if 75 percent wanted to continue with it and adhere to the rules or see if they can adhere to the rules or are willing to. I would like to see it go that way.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak to any issue?
Yeah, my name is Libardo. I live outside the city limits, but still I have property concerns in the city. Why should a few people be penalized for everybody? When some of these people burn constantly, I've had a neighbor that 24/7 he burns, called the police, nothing's been done. But I got one other question, gentlemen. The city has got property, east of Route 40, west of Route 40. What are you going to do when these planes spray the pesticide? That's just as bad as the burning, if not worse. What do you get when they're putting, let's say we got ammonia? I think Mr. Schunman, maybe you maybe smelled it today because they were doing it in east of town and the wind was coming from the northeast. It smells pretty bad. So if you're talking about burning and to have the city worried about the smell when visitors come, let's just look at the west end of Rock Falls. The old parish altar still looks crappy. So if we're talking about beautification, smell, those pesticides can be just as bad as anything. When those planes drop that stuff down, you can't tell me it stays right there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else with any concerns they'd like to express to the council? If not, thank you to those that made comments. Ms. Rasta, do you want that list entered into the record? You said you had a list of other supporters? I'm just asking.
Thanks.
We'll see that the clerk gets that. All right. Next item of business on the agenda is community affairs. Bethany, chamber, please.
Good evening. When I was getting ready to come tonight, I felt like I was putting together a book because we have so much stuff going on right now. One of the things that I really wanted to bring to your attention is what we call the Sauk Valley Community Leadership Program. This has been a partnership between our area chambers, so Sauk Valley Chamber, Rock Falls Chamber, and Dixon Chamber, also with the Sauk Valley Community College. We've had some excellent things come out of this program and we're getting ready to start a new year for it, so applications are available now. One of the things that I think is really important about this program, we had about 40 different speakers come and speak to the people who are part of the program. The mayor has spoken, Chief Nelson was speaking at this, Tony McCumbie came and spoke to our classmates this last week. What I would want you to keep in mind also is that the age group for this, we have people that are in their 50s all the way down to their 20s, so it is a wide variety of ages. When we first started the program, I thought, you know, this is going to be people just coming out of college and, you know, looking for that next step. But what it really turned out to be is an opportunity for them to meet a lot of people. If you think about the different speakers that were involved and what they learned from them, it was just so valuable. And I wanted to encourage you guys, if you know anyone that is interested in the program, to have them sign up and look at the website. It's on Sauk Valley Community College's website if you just search Sauk Valley Leadership Program, or you can stop by the office and ask me. And this might even be something that you want to consider for employees of the city of Rock Falls, that it's an opportunity for them to grow some leadership skills and even some community skills as far as meeting other people and networking and coming up with some new ideas. So that's one thing. Does anybody have any questions about that particular topic? Moving on to some other things that the chamber's been involved with here in the near future, the farmer's market is going to open in May and that is going to be a little bit different this year. We're pretty excited about it. We are charging no fees to participate. We are having a meeting on April 25 at 1:30. It's open to anybody. We are asking that people let us know that they're coming just so we can make sure we have a seat for them. But we are partnering with the Whiteside County Health Department and they're going to be speaking about any concerns related to selling any food products down there. So if somebody wants to have a bake sale or sample watermelon or anything like that, they'll explain that. But we're also going to go over some of the rules and guidelines. We do ask for people to register. You can sell produce. Crafters are welcome. Even small businesses are welcome to go down there and sell. One other important note about that this year is that we're actually bringing on an intern who's going to be the market manager and we met with her this morning. Her name is Whitney Forward and she is from the area and really interested in getting involved in community and learning some new things. So she's going to be helping plan events down there and keep the farmer's market organized for us. So that's going to really help our market to continue to grow and be viable for the community. Questions about farmer's market? Apologize, I have a little bit of a list today. Another thing that's really important is the Cesquis Centennial Committee has asked us to take on the parade. And I did want to let you know that we have the parade forms up and ready to go on the website now, so anyone can go ahead and join in the parade registration. There is no charge for the registrations and we do have a deadline for registration for this. No later than July 26, the parade will be on August 5. What I would love to have from you at this point is if you have any suggestions of groups or organizations that we could contact, we would like to do that. We're working on a mailing list at this time, so any suggestions on that are welcome and appreciated. And anyone listening on TV, if you have some ideas, we would just really like to include as many people in the area as possible. And that's kind of it for the parade. But just keep in mind also that the community garage sale days are coming up, May 19 through 21st. You'll probably see some banners and things out for that. What's unique about the garage sales is our last garage sale event that we had, we went through over 3,500 printed maps. And when I say that, that's not that we had a stack and a bunch left over. That was 3,500 completely gone, taken, people picked those up. We had over 1,500 downloads of the map online. So it's a significant number of people that were involved in that sale as far as shopping. We received calls from Chicago, Rockford, Quad Cities, all over the area interested in shopping at this sale. So it does bring in a lot of people, but it also kind of gets people moving around our community as a whole. So every time we do have this sale, I even have people that live here who will tell me, "I had no idea that this business existed on Route 30," or "I didn't know about this place on Second Street." We encourage them to buy gas here and eat here and they really do. So that's one of the important things to know about the garage sales. We are taking registrations for that. It's $10 and then we just put that money right back into community projects and events that we do as a chamber. So that's coming up here, May 19 through 21st. And then we're also continuing to work on Summer Splash, which is coming up in June. I think a lot of you know that. But I have one more thing to invite you to. On Thursday, from 5 to 7, CGH is having an open house, similar to a business after hours, but it's an open house to celebrate their 30th anniversary for their foundation and you are invited. We just need an RSVP to our office by tomorrow if you're interested in coming. So like I said, I felt like I was putting together a book for today. Does anybody have any questions or comments for me?
Sounds like you got an exciting spring/summer coming up for you.
Yeah, if you've been trying to get ahold of me or schedule a meeting and it's been challenging, that's why. We've just been busy. And over here, this is Sarah, our program coordinator. So if you haven't met Sarah, she's joining me tonight as well. But yeah, we're really busy at the chamber right now.
That's good.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Bethany about any of the objects that she's outlined this evening? Thank you, Bethany.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. There are only two items, but as always, I will ask if any members of the council wish to have either one of the items removed for further discussion. If not, Mr. Clerk, please.
First item is approval of the minutes of the March 21st, I'm sorry, that should be April 4th, 2017 regular council meeting. And second item is approval of the bills as presented.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
With the change?
With the change.
Correction, excuse me, with the correction. Motion been made by Mr. Schunman.
Second.
Second by Mr. Snow. Motion by Mr. Schunman, second by Mr. Snow, approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schunman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Next item on the agenda will be our ordinances. All of the ordinances this evening are for second reading and adoption.
Adoption of ordinance 2017-2303, authorizing lease of real estate for the cellular tower.
Make a motion to approve 2017-2303 for adoption.
Second motion.
Motion by Mr. Snow, second by Mr. Schunman for the adoption of ordinance 2017-2303. Further discussion or questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schunman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Seven aye. Adoption of ordinance 2017-2304, supplemental appropriation ordinance.
I move for the adoption of ordinance 2017-2304.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, excuse me, second by Mr. Logan for the adoption of ordinance 2017-2304, supplemental to the appropriation ordinance. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schunman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Seven aye. Adoption of ordinance 2017-2305, vacating a portion of the alley south of Ada Street.
I move for adoption of 2017-2305.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Reitzel, seconded by Mr. Snow for the adoption of ordinance 2017-2305, vacating a portion of the alley south of Ada Street. Any further questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schunman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Seven aye. Adoption of ordinance 2017-2306, adding Article 6 to Chapter 20, open burning.
Make a motion to approve for adoption 2017-2306. Second.
Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Logan for the adoption of ordinance 2017-2306, adding Article 6 to Chapter 20 under open burning. Further discussion or comments? Mr. Schunman.
Yes, Your Honor. Yes, Your Honor. I just want to renew my objection to the process that this ordinance and 2307 went through. I think it was established, there was no emergency, there was no reason to skip these two ordinances over the ordinance committee. The committee should have been able to review this before it came to the council. I think the fact that we have two ordinances here is an indication of that ordinance that was sent out from the committee as being somewhat flawed. And I know it was a copy, we used a copy, somewhat of a copy of the Sterling ordinance to follow, but it just shows when it came back as two ordinances that there was something wrong when it went out and it should have come back. And I would say that in the future, we should not make a habit of skipping the committee process for these kinds of things unless there's a dire emergency. I understand in some cases, there's emergencies, time is of the essence in some cases and that has to happen. But in this case, it wasn't and I think it needed to come back. And I think we missed an opportunity to strike a compromise and to satisfy both sides of the coin, because we know we're split 50/50 on this issue. And I just think we missed an opportunity. And finally, I want to say to the argument that's given for justification for doing this and going against what the surveys have said. And that justification was that the city of Sterling was faced with a similar vote. They ran a survey and their city council went against the wishes of their survey and that kind of justifies us doing that as well. Well, let me just tell you what my mom used to say. She used to say this to her kids when we tried to get away with that. She'd say, she'd put her hands on her hips and she'd look at us and she'd say, "Just because Sterling jumps off a bridge, does that mean that you have to jump off a bridge too?" And the answer is, "No, it doesn't." That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
I have some.
Mr. Kuhlmeier?
Yes, the lady brought up the burning rings. Does this, and I know the answer to this, but I'll ask our legal counsel, will this prohibit recreational fires?
No.
The state permits recreational fires over our burning ordinance?
No, the ordinance as I was directed to prepare it permits recreational fires to occur within certain limits. I forget exactly the time periods now that were spelled out. But recreational fires are those that are outside, there's a limit as to the size and the time periods within which they can be. You wouldn't remember. Yep. It's a suggestion.
And I'll direct this to our police chief. Are recreational fires one of the chief sources of annoyance when it comes to fires?
No, with their being affected too, that's what we make sure some of the families that fire not being there.
Do they not use building materials and yard waste and things like that in the fires?
Fires get smaller, you may involve somebody in the neighborhood, but that is not a problem.
Thank you.
I have one comment. After this came up last session, I spoke with a number of people and they're wishing that we would enforce the ordinances the way it is and that's the way I'm going to move tonight.
Right?
I want to clarify one thing for Mr. Schunman's comment. He talked about two ordinances. I was directed to prepare an ordinance that prohibits open burning of landscape waste. And when I did that, I realized that there was already an ordinance in the refuse collection section of the ordinances that permitted the burning of that. So I had to do a second ordinance to amend that one to clarify that that ordinance was no longer applicable. That's why there's two. That's why there's two.
I understand that, but my point was though, that it came from the committee as one ordinance.
But had I not done it, there would have been a conflict if it had been.
I understand that, yes.
Had one ordinance prohibiting it and another one allowing it. And I didn't think that that was something that I should allow as a city attorney, that's all.
Anyone else wish to speak to the issue? We have a motion on the floor made by Mr. Snow, it's been seconded by Mr. Logan for the adoption of ordinance 2017-2306 for Chapter 20, open burning. Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
No.
Alderman Schunman.
No.
Alderman Kleckler.
No.
Alderman Folsom.
No.
Three aye.
We have a four no and we have a three yes, since the negative is the majority in this particular vote.
You can't, you're the vote, you can't.
Right, I can't change it, but I can veto this, can I?
Yeah, no, because there's no veto, there's no order to pass the veto.
Okay. So the only way for the issue to come back to the council then, just before we say anything, would be to go through the committee and come back again. All right, thank you. Does it change the second ordinance since it was made? That's on the agenda, you should go ahead too. Correct. I just wanted to make sure from a legal standpoint, since it was changed because of.
Well, I'm, no, I do have separate orders because.
You don't understand, one would have changed the other. Correct. Okay, very good. So then that particular ordinance fails. Next.
Adoption of ordinance 2017-2307, amending Section 32-510, burning.
Make a motion to approve for adoption 2017-2307. Second.
Motion been made and seconded for the adoption of ordinance 2017-2307, amending Section 32-510, burning. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
No.
Alderman Schunman.
No.
Alderman Kleckler.
No.
Alderman Folsom.
No.
Three aye.
That motion fails also.
Adoption of ordinance 2017-2308, amending Article 11 of Chapter 6, private outdoor pools.
I'll make a motion to approve 2017-2308.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schunman, seconded by Mr. Folsom for the adoption of ordinance 2017-2308, amending Chapter 6, private outdoor pools. Discussion. Comments? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schunman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Seven aye. Adoption of ordinance 2017-2311, amending Section 34-283 and 34-282, uses for B1 zoning.
I'll make a motion to approve 2017-2311.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Schunman, seconded by Mr. Kuhlmeier for the adoption of ordinance 2017-2311, amending Section 34, 283 and 34-284, uses for B1 zoning. Further discussion?
I'd like to offer an amendment on this, Your Honor. I'd like to see that we would amend and add to Section 1, Line 1 and Line 2 out of Section 2, authorizing animal hospitals, veterinary clinics, automobile, truck, trailer and farm implement establishments for repair, display, hire and sales to be permitted uses. I think this would, this would save the city problems in either enforcing or failing to enforce these two sections of the zoning code.
Okay, so you're suggesting an amendment, so that would, I'd need a motion from you to make that amendment?
Yes.
Yes, I do.
I thought that's what I did. I thought I made a motion for that.
Okay, so motion has been made by Mr. Kleckler for, and please, would you restate, now that I have the doctor in front of me?
To add to Section 1, Lines 1 and 2 from Section 2, making the animal hospital, veterinary clinics, the automobile, truck, trailer and farm implement establishments permitted uses in the B1 zoning.
Okay, the motion's been made by Mr. Kleckler to take Items 1 and 2 out of Section 34-284 from the ordinance being presented with the motion already 2017-2311 and add him to Section 1, 34-283, excuse me, permitted principal use. Is there a second to that motion? Hearing no second, that motion dies without a second. We revert back to the motion that is on the floor from Mr. Schunman and seconded by Mr. Kuhlmeier for the adoption of ordinance 2017-2311, using for B1 as presented. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Recuse.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schunman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Folsom.
Yes.
Six aye. Adoption of ordinance 2017-2312, amending Section 16, 390-1, special use permit.
Let the record show before motion entered, Mr. Alderman, excuse me, I'm sorry, looking at him. Alderman Snow will recuse himself from this vote. Chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve 2017-2312.
Motion by Mr. Schunman, seconded by Mr. Kuhlmeier for the adoption of ordinance 2017-2312, excuse me, amending Section 16, 390-1, special use permit. Discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Recuse.
I'm sorry. Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven I.
Six.
Oh, I'm sorry, six I, yes.
And that ends the ordinance adoption.
Just getting warmed up.
Next item on the agenda is City Administrator, Ms. Blacker, please.
Your Honor, I'd like to cover Item Number 2 under me prior to doing the budget summary.
Without objection, please.
I'd like to ask for approval of the execution of a lease agreement with Altec Capital for 2016 TA 50M bucket truck with four annual payments of $49,375.
This is for the Electric Department.
I would move we execute the lease with Altec. Second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Logan, seconded by Mr. Schuneman for the approval, the execution of the lease with Altec Capital for a bucket truck for the Electric Department with four annual payments of $49,375. Questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven I.
All right, Mayor. On to the exciting budget summary that everyone looks forward to. All of you, in front of you, have your budget summary document, we'll put it up on the screen as well. I'd like to start on Page Number 5 of the summary, which is the FY '18 General Fund Revenue. The General Fund Assumption for the Reoccurring Revenue Sources with Slight Growth in Some Revenue Sources and Stagnation in Others. The FY '18 Budget predicts an increase in General Fund Revenues by 2.42% over Fiscal Year '17. Certain revenue assumptions are made based on historical data and formulas as supplied by the Illinois Municipal League for calculating motor fuel tax, state use tax and state income tax. Notable changes in revenue are reflected in the budget as presented, with the most significant being the expectation of utilizing the funds from the US EPA and Illinois EPA for environmental assessment of the limestone building along with the riverfront. Along the riverfront, sorry. Another significant increase is the Rural Fire Protection District increase of $100,000 over past years. Due to the burdensome increase in fire and police pension costs, the city has asked for an increased contribution from the Rural Fire Protection District. The escalated contribution to the fire and police pension funds caused the city to hold a truth in taxation hearing in 2016. The final levied amount represented an increase on the city's line item of your property taxes at 16.12% over previous years. Contributions to the General Fund revenues by the utilities held steady at 13% of the overall realized general revenue and blows a chart representing the past six years of general fund revenues. As you can see, there is a pie chart on Page 8 representing all of the revenues and you can see historically we're staying the same with sales tax representing 31%, property tax at 20% and income tax at 14%. Those being the three highest contributions to the general fund revenues. On to Page 9, the General Fund Expenditures and Assumptions. The Fiscal Year '18 General Fund assumes increased expenditures over FY '17 by 2.82%. The most notable increase is in the Fire and Police Departments budgets and is due to the Consolidated Dispatch, which was mandated by the State of Illinois. Some of the General Fund budgets have experienced a decrease in expenditures. However, the overall increase in spending at 2.82% is exceeding the increase in anticipated, is exceeding the increase in anticipated revenues of 2.42%. As in the past, the three largest general fund budgets are the Police, Street and Fire Departments. The Street Department has experienced a decrease in anticipated expenditures due mostly to the mild winter recently experienced, which left the city with a large inventory of road salt. Because of this inventory, the city will be ordering far less road salt for the upcoming FY '18 winter supply. We have a pie chart on Page 10, which represents the expenditures per department and as also historical, the Police is our largest at 38% of the expenditures with the Street Department at 21% and the Fire Department at 17%. On to Page 11, FY '18 Utility Enterprise Funds Summary. We'll start with the Electric Utility. The Rock Falls Electric Utility was again the recipient of the RP3 Award through the American Public Power Association. The RP3 program recognizes utilities that demonstrate high proficiency in reliability, safety, workforce development and system improvement. Criteria within each of the four RP3 areas are based upon sound business practices and recognized industry-leading practices. The Electric, the Electric Utilities Rate Study has recently been completed and presentation to the City Council is anticipated in early FY '18. The revenue assumptions for the utility are not inclusive of any rate increase which may be enacted. The hydroelectric generation facility located at the upper dam has operated at record levels and generated over 1 million kilowatt hours multiple months during the past fiscal year. There are no other significant changes to the operation and maintenance or capital budgets of the electric utility, with the biggest share of the capital expenditures going towards ongoing maintenance and upgrading of the hydroelectric facility. Water and wastewater. The FY '18 budget reflects a 0.99% increase in the water rates for basic residential customers and a 0.98% increase in wastewater rates to basic residential customers effective May 1st of 2017. The water and wastewater departments are completing a rate study, which will be presented to the council during FY '18. However, no increase from that rate study is anticipated during the fiscal '18 year. There are no significant changes to revenues or expenditures in the water and wastewater FY '18 budgets. FY '17 saw the establishment of the Utility Office Superintendent, which has been a great success and is helping to solidify policies and procedures with the Utility Customer Service Office. Garbage. There are no notable or significant changes to the FY '18 garbage budget. FY '18 does however mark the final year of the current multi-year contract with mooring disposal for solid waste pickup within the city. No changes in garbage collection rates are anticipated in FY '18. The next page is an interesting comparison from year to year to see what the expenditures and the revenues for the utility funds are. And on Page 13, we have the historical revenue summaries and just as a note, FY '17 and '18, those are not, of course, '17, we haven't finished that fiscal year, so those are still the budgeted numbers and '18 are the assumptions for the upcoming year. The Electric Department, the decline in electric revenues continues with the decline of 6.67% since FY '14. This decline is due in part to fewer users and also much more efficient appliances, et cetera, in our homes. The water revenues have continued to increase. This increase in revenues is marked at 9.57% since FY '14. And sewers, since the opening of the new wastewater treatment facility in July of 2011, wastewater revenues have been level with a slight decrease of 1.94% since FY '14, with only slight fluctuations in the years between. The next few pages are the summary of the total governmental funds. And as you can see on that, our projected revenues and our projected expenditures for the general fund, or, excuse me, yes, for the general fund show a $33 surplus. The next few pages are giving the, each department's totals for expenditures and revenues. And the last page shows the total of the governmental funds, which is the total of the utility funds, the enterprise funds and the general fund. The total operating budget expenditures for the City of Rock Falls in fiscal year '18 is $26,615,189 and projects a surplus balance in the amount of $33. This surplus balance assumes total revenues will be $26,615,222. This is an overall increase of $922,264 or 3.59% over the projected FY '17 budget revenues. One-time revenues of $4.1 million from the issuance of bonds to fund the gigabit fiber optic broadband network are included in the governmental total fun, fund total. No other remarkable or notable changes are assumed. The FY '18 budget continues Rock Falls' strong budgetary performance in maintaining an operating surplus. The city has historically maintained very strong budgetary flexibility with sufficient and stable fund balances. In addition, the city's liquidity remains excellent with available cash internally and access to external liquidity if necessary. And then the last two pages are just our bragging pages where Rock Falls was named the IMEA Municipality of the Year. And the last one is the Water Department's Groundwater Protection Award that they won, the Source Water Protection Award. So I'd entertain any questions or comments at this time regarding the budget summary. I want to thank the aldermen for sitting here those two nights and going through the budget line item by line item and I also want to thank the department heads who do an absolutely fantastic job with their budgets. They make my job a lot simpler and I just want to thank them for their hard work on their individual department budgets.
Motion for the adoption of the FY '18 budget.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Logan for the adoption of the FY '18 budget as presented. Further questions or discussion?
I do, I do have something to say in that Alderman Logan and I sat in on a discussion with Standard and Forests and some of the return from Standard and Forests were almost verbatim to some of the last statements made on our budget that we're in a strong position and we managed our finances very well. And a lot of that credit goes towards Robin Blacker, who is our administrator, as well as all the departments and all the workers in the City of Rock Falls.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhlmeier. Any additional comments?
I think that was well said.
Motion stands on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven I.
Anything else?
That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is information correspondence. Mr. Ardini, City Clerk.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Reese?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Frickenstein.
Yes, I want to ask for approval of our Engineering Services Agreement for the Galt Avenue Road Reconstruction Project. But before I do, just wanted to give you a quick update on the RB&amp;W Riverfront site. If you've been by there the last two or three days, you'll see that activity has restarted. There's been about 40 loads of black dirt that have been brought in, spread out. I think there's still some loads there that haven't been spread out. The berms that are going in there have been rough graded. Sodding will be next. I'm not sure if that'll start anymore this week or not. There's still some sidewalk that needs to be finished also. And I think about half the trees that are donated have also been put in also, so. Does anybody got any questions on the RB&amp;W site?
Hearing done. Chair will entertain a motion to approve Engineering Services for Galt Avenue Road Project. Design face engineering act to exceed 50,000 and construction engineering act to exceed 14,000. So, motion by Mr. Reitzel?
Second the motion.
Second by Mr. Schuneman. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven I. Thank you.
Department heads, Mr. Cox?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Simon? Please, Chief Nelson.
I would just like to take the time to acknowledge the work that our police department has been doing since the incident in downtown Rock Falls Saturday. We are very blessed to have the department under the leadership of Chief Nelson, the detectives and all of the officers involved. And I would be remiss, and I know Tammy would say this as well, you know, when events like this occur, nobody, nobody wants it in your community. But when it happens and you act in the professional and expedient manner that our department has, to include the response and support from the Sterling Police Department and detectives, support of the Whiteside County, and at one time even Profistown and Tampico Police were patrolling our committee, our community, because when events like this happen and there's a concentration in one area, the good times just keep rolling. And there was multiple calls and other big events going on and fortunately with the support of the other communities sending police officers here, those were able to be taken care of and curtailed in a very appropriate manner.
And Chief Nelson, try to, you and your department, and thank to the other chiefs and staff if you see them from us. Very well. And Chief Cook? You know, you guys have been battling some fires, it's getting to be that time of year when people want to burn and then they walk away and the results you guys have dealt with today, so appreciate that. Mr. Serian, Building Inspector?
I'm asking for approval, recommendation from the Building Code Committee to accept the law maintenance bid from Burger Brothers Trucking and Excavating, Field Box 107, Rock Falls, Illinois.
Make a motion to approve. Second the motion.
Motion's been made by Mr. Snow and seconded by Mr. Schuneman to approve the recommendation from the Building Code Committee to accept the lawn maintenance bid from Burger Brothers Trucking and Excavating. Any additional questions?
Hold on, a question from Mark. It doesn't appear that that is the low bid. The reason why you're not accepting the low bid, is there a finding that it's not a responsible bidder?
Hopefully I say this correctly. Basically, this is an enforcement action and the low bid, we don't want to be a low, a lawn maintenance company out there. We don't want people basically to see that we're doing too cheap and just keep mowing properties over and over and over, was the discussion from the committee.
It was, and it was, the discussion was also had that the, the low bidder was in Davenport and they did not see how it, we, they did not feel that it was a trusted source as far as the bid. The bid was actually so low and that the person coming from Davenport, that it was not feasible, that it was a legitimate bid. That is basically what the committee said, they didn't even feel like it was a legitimate We did put the wording in there that we did not have to accept the low bid.
You asked the question, there was a resident, so please. As you can see, they don't put these off the bid and normally we have a lot of bidding processes. Is it considered the lowest responsible bidder?
Yeah, that's why I have a question, is why, is the finding for making it responsible?
Right, the, the outfit from Davenport bids were so, so low, I mean, couldn't even get anybody to mow your lawn for that price, let alone drive in from Davenport.
I think, well, and I think the other part of that too is that, to add to what Mark was saying, the city has no desire to become a lawn mowing service for abandoned properties. And part of this is that the cost for the city to do it is much higher. Not only do we have to pay the person who's mowing it, then when the lanes are filed, we also have substantial costs involved in filing those lanes. So.
we also have substantial costs involved in filing those liens. So, if, if you have someone who bids so low that you don't think it's a responsible bidder, we become a very cheap mowing service to those abandoned properties, and enforcement becomes virtually impossible, because we're mowing it cheaper than what they could charge, than what they could get a kid down the street to mow it for, so.
Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Shuneman. Any further questions or discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye.
One other comment, just the famous question we all hear is, when is Dunkin' Donuts coming? The permit has been issued for Dunkin' Donuts. They're waiting for the engineers to stake it out. Last I was told, they're hopefully middle of this week, by the end of the week, the property will be staked out for the foundations, for a mortar and such, and construction will start, so. I expect to see stakes in the ground by the end of the week, and hopefully construction next week, so it's finally here, after all the questions about Dunkin' Donuts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Mr. Pedilla, please.
On the, on the first action, I'd like to table that due to concern of the city's attorney's prevailing wage. I'd like to take that back to Public Works and make, so, table that.
So, you want, it's going to go back to committee?
Yes.
Then let's, let's just figure out, and return it to committee, so otherwise it'll show up next month, unless you take action, so.
And I'd like to ask for approval for purchase of commercial water meters from Ferguson Waterworks, seventeen twenty State Street, DeKalb, Illinois, for twenty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. And these are, I'm sorry.
Motion? Second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Mr. Reitzel, seconded by Mr. Snow, for the purchase of water meters. Sorry to cut you off, Ted.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. I was just going to let you know that these are larger meters, two inch and above, that are over two thousand units that are at their time, so we're going to replace them. And it's going to have the leak detection information on it, so.
Any further questions, comments? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye.
This afternoon, I placed a survey, a plumbing survey on your desk, if you remember, about a year ago. We sent these out, and the utility bills, well, only got four hundred back out of four thousand. So, as are required in our ordinance slash EPA, we have to go out and get these surveys taken care of. So, we started this first week of April, and we're probably through two cycles now, that this is giving the public notice to the residents and the businesses that we will be knocking on doors, and if nobody's there, then we're going to be leaving a door knocker to inspect for cross connections slash the materials that's coming in through the building or premises, so we know what kind of, whether it's copper, or plastic, or galvanized. And that's part of the, what the EPA is requiring for us to know by April of two thousand and eighteen. Okay? And also, there's been some information put out about water testing for lead. No, we're not going to be doing that. We do have a, every three years, we test lead and copper samples. We do about twenty-five samples throughout the city.
Which is in compliance.
Yes. Yeah. So if anybody has any questions, and they're coming to you, this is why we're going to make this, the ordinance of the EPA requires us to, okay?
Thank you, Ted. Any other questions for Mr. Pedilla?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Diane?
Thank you very much. Rock Falls Tourism is requesting changes to the facade improvement grant, and we're looking for approval. As Uptown River District evolves, we would like to continue to help businesses utilize a facade improvement grant and beautify the Uptown River District. And that's why we're seeking the approval from Rock Falls City Council to allow the addition of Fifth Avenue from West Second Street to West Third Street to the facade improvement grant application.
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Mr. Logan, for the approval of the facade improvement grant application with the revisions to the map which is attached. Any additional questions or comments? Hearing done, roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. That all, Jim?
This time.
Thank you. Committee reports tonight, we have one for Public Works. Mr. Reitzel?
I'd like to ask for the approval of the twenty-seventeen budget maintenance program designed by the Public Works Committee.
Second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Reitzel, seconded by Mr. Shuneman, to approve the twenty-seventeen road maintenance program as presented by the Public Works Committee. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
No.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Six aye.
Board reports? Mr. Reitzel?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Logan?
Just to, again, commend the police department for their work. Also, the fire and EMS people were a big part of that, obviously, not the solving of the crime and all of that, but both fire departments and several EMS units were there to help, so they also should be commended for their work, so.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sn, oh, excuse me, Mr. Kuhlmeier.
Okay. I echo those words, George, completely, and I'm very proud of our community and the reaction to it. The, the other thing I, I should have mentioned when we talked about the burning ordinance is that our garbage depart, our, the contractors for our garbage will pick up yard waste free of charge for the remainder of the contract. I don't know what will happen after this, but I would encourage people to use that. I use it myself, and it, it's a very good way to dispose of your leaves without endangering or making your neighbors mad.
Mr. Snow?
Well, I'd like to start off with thanking the residents of the city of Rock Falls in the Second Ward for allowing me to serve them for another four years. And I would like to make a recommendation that we send back to ordinance the burning ordinances that were drafted for approval tonight that did not get approved, and revisit those, and try to come up with a conclusion to remedy the situation. I did receive numerous phone calls, numerous emails, and a lot of messages on Facebook, hoping this ordinance would go through tonight, because it is a quality of life. And I'm going to urge residents that, you know, if you do have neighbors or, or people near you burning wet leaves, we do have ordinances in place that do need to be kind of followed through with. If you do have a problem, call our local law enforcement, and if it's affecting the quality of life that you're having, because you do have a right to quality of life in the city of Rock Falls. I just urge you to make the phone call, and hopefully we can remedy the problem that way, since we do have an ordinance in place that does limit how you burn, so. With that, I'd also like to thank all, everybody who was involved in the incident that happened downtown over the weekend. You guys did a spectacular job on, on being very professional and, and getting through and try to remedy the problem that was down there. It's, it's a sad thing that that did come to our city. Unfortunately, you have no control of that, and just, you know, prayers go out to all involved. I mean, and luckily, there was no fatalities during that incident. And again, I'd like to thank our department and all other departments and all involved in that situation.
Thank you, Mr. Snow. Mr. Shuneman?
Nothing from the ward, Your Honor, but I'd like to send out some congratulations to a local boy, Jake Junis. Jake was called up from the AAA Kansas City Organization to the major leagues for a brief shining moment. He's back down in AAA, but I think congratulations to Jake, to Jody, Jennifer, Noah, the whole family, Gracie. I'm sure that Jake got a taste of the big leagues, and he's going to want to go back, and knowing him, he's going to make it. So congratulations to the entire Junis family.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Mr. Kluckler?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Folsom?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, under the mayor's, under the mayor's report, I have one item for action, and that is to ask the council to approve resolution twenty-seventeen seven fifty-nine that was drafted by our city attorney for approving a grant of license to use real estate for the Sesquicentennial Headquarters, to be located at one-ten West Second Street. The property is owned by Mr. David Barages, and that resolution was in your packet. The intent of this is to use that facilities at the city's cost for electricity only, and this will be for a period from, starting in May, till after the Sesquicentennial is over, the probably second week in August. So move.
Second the motion.
Motion by Mr. Folsom, seconded by Mr. Shuneman, to approve that request. Is there any additional comments? The chair might be able to answer for you.
I just have one question, Your Honor.
Yes, sir, please.
I was somewhat surprised, and normally in a lease like this, I see some levels of insurance, rather than just, you know, there's...
The city is the licensee. The city's using the building, and the only thing that included in there was the burden said that the city was exempt by landlord against any damages from the use by the city of the property. It's not really a lease, and it's not for the protection of the... If I'd been drafting this for the landlord, I might have amended that the city could use a level of insurance.
Actually, this is different.
Because I'm not representing the city, okay?
Any other questions? Okay. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Couple other things. Senator Neil Anderson and Representative Tony McComby of our area will be guests of Mayor Skip Lee on four-twenty-one, from nine to eleven a.m. at the Candlelight Inn in Sterling. Any elected officials are welcome to attend. They're going to be talking about what's going on down in Springfield, and... Sure much, nine to eleven, Your Honor. Yeah, nine to eleven. Okay, so I just want to throw that out there. You're more than welcome. You don't need to RSVP, just show up. I'd also like to remind, I thought Sharon might say something while she was here, but the Landlords Association Cleanup Day, or Collect Debris Nobody Else Want Day, or whatever appropriately, will be Saturday, May thirteenth, from eight a.m. to two p.m., and that will be in the parking lot up on the riverfront, near the slab. And for anyone that might be listening, the question, we've had a lot of questions the last couple of days about TVs, because TVs is on the list of something they collect, but is there any that they don't take? And the answer is no. If you bring it, it'll disappear. The last thing that I want to do, since the city has taken the steps to start the process of becoming a gigabit community and developing of a broadband program here, if people will look on Channel Five, if they have the opportunity, they will see a posting there displaying a vehicle with, on the side of it, MI-Tech. This is a company that is in town, driving around, walking the roadways, walking the streets, doing survey work and engineering work for the layout of the broadband. So if you see these vehicles and these cars, that's what they are doing, and if, they should have no need to come to your door or approach your house. But if you do have any questions or any issues that arise, please feel free to call the police department, but we know they're here and they're doing work, and all their cars have flashing yellow lights and stuff on them, so they're pretty self-evident. That's all that I have for this evening. Other than to, I'm sure he's not watching, because he's at a party, but today, my, one of my little brothers turns sixty, retired after thirty-six years with the city on National Lineman Day, the day that he's worked for thirty-six years for. So Brother Jeff, if you did get near the phone or television and are watching, love you, and congratulations on a wonderful career, and enjoy fishing. Next thing we have is executive session, and I would, the chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session for personnel, section two C one, and collective bargaining, section two C two. So moved. Second. Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Mr. Reitzel. Any questions? Hearing done, roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Folsom?
Yes.
Seven aye.